Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Carrico.
Here.
Councilmember Widman.
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in crediting this? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from council? Hearing none. If the council would join me down, they will do a proclamation and also a presentation for Roy Hess. So why don't we all go down? (laughing). Tom? We were talking a minute ago. Everyone has their significant others here for support. So go around here. (laughing). Okay, this is for National, a proclamation for National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character, municipalities are increasingly turning to a national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas during 2014, 674 RSVP volunteers in Adams County, East Arapahoe Counties donated 118,944 hours of service, serving in more than 60 locations, helping in food banks, tending community gardens, tutoring in schools, helping in hospitals, senior centers, and adulting programs, assisting veterans, and much, much more. And whereas 99 Northland RSVP volunteers donated 18,369 hours of the total number of hours served, providing vital support to city residents and improving the quality of life in our community. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, cities of service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7, 2015. Now therefore, I rejoice down in with the mayors of the city of Northland, Colorado, hereby proclaim April 7, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day for the city of Northland, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of service in our city and thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their community. Dated Northland, Colorado, this 23rd day of March, 2015.
Well, we thank you all, and this is not for me, this is for the 675 volunteers, 99 of whom are here in this city, and all that they do. But there is another opportunity, and I'll officially invite you for that. That's the April 4 at Stonehocker Community Garden, where it's kind of a photographic event for us, but it's also a work day. And I'd invite you, I know Wade is going to be there, and Joyce is going to be there, but at 10:00 in the morning, we're replacing the upright posts and fencing that we use for the upright part of our garden. Over time, it's kind of rotted away, so now we're replacing it. And so, we're going to be doing that at 10:00 in the morning, and I'd encourage any of you that want to come out and spend an hour helping us, we'll be doing that. This, by the way, was also extended this year to county commissioners. And so, not only is it, we hope, 15, I think it's 7,500 mayors or something like that across the country, but also county commissioners. So I have a couple of the county commissioners that are also going to piggyback on that event out at Stonehocker. I don't think I had told you that yet.
No, you didn't tell me.
But at least two, at least two of them are going to be there, so.
Well, we always enjoy having them.
It's kind of a joint, a joint venture. But thank you so much for this, and I'll pass this along to our people. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tom. (applause). Thank you again for coming. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is, we have a little recognition for Roy Hess, if he would like to come up. Now, this is just a small token in recognition for so many hours and so many days that you have, and all the work you have done. You have been part of the Historic Commission since 1999.
Yes.
And have really done a lot for us. You've educated us, you know, none of us had an idea what Queen Anne Anne's, you know, structure was, and many other things, but you've walked us through it, and you've helped us so much.
Thank you.
You truly will be missed, definitely. So I do want to present you with this, and I will read this to you. The city of Northland is presenting this to you, Dedicated Service Award, presented to Roy Hess, Northland Historic Preservation Commission, November 11, 1999, to February 3, 2015, presented by myself and the City Council of Northland, this 9th day of March, 2015. It's a little different, the date, but there was a little, you know.
Wardrobe malfunction.
There was a wardrobe malfunction. So, again, Roy, thank you, you know, we've, you know, kept, have not only been members of the commission, but friends.
Gotcha.
And it's going to be very difficult to move on without you, so.
Well, may I, may I, please say?
That's one of the dangers of asking me to say anything. I'm going to come back, and I'm going to shake everybody's hand there in a moment. But the city of Northland and the staff, the city council, the mayor, and so forth, really have a special thing in the Teta House at Stonehocker Historic Park. There is not another farmhouse museum in this area that even comes close to this house in terms of its size, its construction, its beautiful thing. I've been in farmhouses all over the front range, and there are some nice ones, but there are none nicer, and none that I know of, that can hold a candle to this. So preserve it. No one else is going to. There are some people, probably in the city of Northland, who would use it for the fire department. Don't let them do that. It's the only thing that we have that exists prior to about, what, 1950? And there was quite a bit prior to 1950, just ask Jean and I, because we existed before 1950. Anyway, treasure that. It's a beautiful, beautiful thing. And this Historic Commission has done a beautiful job. Joyce has certainly been a huge part of it, as I am very proud to be, and thank you very kindly. She said, "We know where you live." So I would invite you, if, if you need anything, call me, and I can walk myself with my cane or walker, whatever, to the phone and try and dredge up some more information if you need it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. (applause). (inaudible).
It is.
I'm like hugging it.
(inaudible). They're talking fire truck here, in case anybody wants to take action. They're everything, expertise, too. Thanks again, Roy.
You're welcome. (applause).
All right. Next on the agenda is public invited, be heard. Five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, we will move to the consent agenda.
Move to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-up vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is ordinance's first reading. Jane.
This is CB 1850, a bill for a special ordinance amending the 2015 budget, recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by appropriation amendment for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government, agencies, and offices of the city of Northland, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015. Move to approve. Second.
Mayor, as Joanna just said, this is a budget amendment. It accomplishes three things. One, it brings forward amounts that we need to for, for the capital projects that were from 2014 to 2015. It, it would appropriate additional funds for the East 112th Avenue Expansion Project, and also for the locker room renovation project, so we can carry those forward. And then, it includes a budget for Civic Center Master Plan Project of $350,000, and also includes funds for the recently completed purchase agreement to acquire 3.47 water shares of Franco Water.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing then, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-up vote, and CB 1850 on first reading passes unanimously. And I would like to note for the record that the public hearing on CB 1850 will be held on April 13, 2015, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to resolutions. The first one is CR 43.
A resolution approving an agreement between the city of Northland and C&amp;L Water Solutions Incorporated for the sewer line replacement project. Move to approve. Second.
Mayor, we had a, we experienced a partially collapsed sewer pipe that serves Taco Bell on Route 4, and we went through a bid process, and we were looking at two different approaches, and we accepted bids for both approaches to this problem. And so, we're, the C&amp;L Water Solutions was low bid, and so we're recommending that the mayor, that the council authorized the mayor to execute the contract between, or with, C&amp;L Water Solutions for $135,410.
Thank you. Discussion?
Says, "During the investigation of the issue, it was determined that the business did not have their grease interceptor correctly installed. Why, why is the city paying for this if the business didn't have the interceptor correctly?"
I'll let David expand on that, but basically, the, the ownership of this line, and the maintenance responsibilities line, is questionable at best as to whether it's, and so, and I'll let David expand on that.
Well, I'm going to expand on Kyle's question as David's walking up here, regardless of, I mean, they're the cause of the failure, so if I was to define it, I would think that they would have some culpability in this.
David?
We, when we discovered the failure, let me back up. What, what had happened is Taco Bell was experiencing quite a few backups, very regular backups into the restaurant, and they hired a plumber which discovered basically that their line was hooked up incorrectly, their grease trap line. Usually, the bathroom lines and the grease straps are separate lines that tap into the sanitary sewer. We, once they did that, they were still having backup problems. We attempted to televise the line, or clean the line. We didn't get our jet all the way through, so we hired our institutional contractor to try to line the line. They discovered that there was a partial, partial break in the line. We tried, attempted to do a point repair on that, which we did, but there were other breaks in the line. So that's kind of how the situation unfolded. When we went back, when we, to actually physically go in and do that first point repair, I could not find any specific easement language that basically delineates who does what. That particular lateral line has two businesses on, on, on it that connect to the main line. And typically, in the, in, and if we had deadness today, and typically in the past, those type of service lines would be under the city's, some sort of agreement for us to maintain and clean, even though it goes through their property. So, at this particular point, you know, we chose to bring this forth to council to go ahead and repair the line. Certainly, your discretion, how you want to handle it and how to pay for it going forward. But right now, we have C&amp;L Water Solutions, which is a very technically sound contractor. They believe that they can repair the line by setting a robotic arm in there, and it was a piece that's hanging down from the ceiling, and get that pushed up so we can get the liner through and do a cure-in-place, rather than excavating, open, cutting, excavating, or placing the line that way. And that, that would be the two different prices. I think one was like $83, and the other one was $135. It's a very difficult job if we have to dig that up. It goes right between their booth and their building, and it's probably about 16 feet deep there. So there's some issues. So again, going back to your question about who should pay for this, I mean, we decided to bring this to council because precedent would say that this should have been our line. It was unfortunately wasn't on, you know, I talked to Scotty about this, and Ray, it's never been on our collection, our cleaning program. I don't know why. Had I to do it over again, if we were to have those two businesses, I would hook them up to a lateral, I would have an easement, just like I would have for a storm easement or a water easement.
Thank you.
That still doesn't, I mean, they caused the problem. So I guess if we don't have anything in language in our code, or procedures, or something that says if a business causes failure for one of our lines, that they're responsible for it, I think we need to do something about that. I understand that we have, we get to maintain it, but if it's their failure, which is clearly because their grease interceptor wasn't installed correctly, that's not on us, and it shouldn't be.
Well, I, I can't say that that's 100% of the reason. I mean, if the city had cleaned the line, you know, I don't think we would have been in this point. The fact is, is that all of our, almost all of our sanitary sewers are concrete lines, and they're very susceptible to degradation due to loading from our food service establishments. That's why we've really ramped up our, you know, industrial pre-treatment program in the past five, six years in order to prevent that. Our latest step is to get all the grease traps registered. We don't, we don't give much leeway. They have to clean those. If they can, they continue to put an excessive loading into the system, we have the authority to go ahead and clean the line, or we'll pump their grease trap, and we can leave their property if we choose to do so. And again, in this particular situation, the grease is most likely the cause of the degradation. Keep in mind, the pipe is probably 35 years old, or 30 years old. And if it was under regular maintenance, I believe, we probably wouldn't be in this position today.
So, I guess a question I have, has there been any conversation with Taco Bell about this, and about their potential cause of this, with, with their grease trap being, or grease interceptor being incorrectly installed? And if there has, is there a middle ground? Because it sounds like there, that there's some of our fault, that we weren't cleaning them on a, on a regular basis, but at the same time, their interceptor was installed incorrectly, and so this might not have happened had that been installed correctly, so.
There's been no discussions with either of those businesses about middle ground as far as, as helping pay for the repair.
What do you think a response from them might be on that? Do you think they'd be adamantly against that, or have you, have you ever ran into this before, where, where we've gone, you know, we cover some of the costs and they cover the other part of the cost?
It's, you know, if it was just a single restaurant on the line, I would say that there's a, you know, the likelihood of the city at the origin of when the, when the development occurred for that commercial industry, us maintaining their lateral line, that's, it was probably not likely, since there's more than two, two businesses on that line. To me, that says it's probably more likely a city line, a city lateral to maintain. And again, you know, there's places like this, throughout the city, there's probably four or five, maybe, and, you know, we're, we're starting to catch up to those, you know. We asked the planning department to basically plot a lot of those sanitary lines that are in lateral conditions that might have the same susceptible treatment, and I don't think any of those have restaurants like this that, that actually really exacerbate the degradation of the concrete line. So, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to influence council one way or another, alls I'm saying is, is, you know, past president, it would be a lateral line that we would typically take care of. If I had to do over today, if those two parcels of land, and Taco Bell and McDonald's were sharing a, a line, a connection to our main line, I would, I just, for public health reasons, I'd want that in a city easement, and I'd want to maintain that line. You know, so today, this is, this is basically where we're at, and I think the position that staff decided to take in presenting to council is, this should have been our line to take care of, and we've left it in our, in our court, and I haven't approached them about all payment or partial payment.
I think that one of the things we could do is we could talk with SIRS about the possibility of filing a claim against either Taco Bell, or McDonald's, or both, depending upon an investigation, you know, after we, after we, after we repair the liner, and then, you know, seeing if we can, if we should file, if there's room for a claim there.
I, I've worked as, as provenly and as diligently as I can to try to uncover some of the, trying to find out easements, and going back through Adams County, it's, it's exasperating, and you'd probably be surprised at the lack of information that sometimes I find there. So it's really hard to point a finger in this particular case.
I don't want to point a finger, but I think that, that, you know, from the information that you're giving us, it sounds like, you know, it's, it's some of our fault, and it's some of their fault as well. And so, I think that, that if we can meet in the middle a little bit on that, or if that's through filing a claim, or Cory, what do you have to say?
Well, I just, there's two sort of parallel issues going on here. The property rights issue in my mind doesn't matter at all. The fact that we needed to maintain it, and that we, and David and I have talked about it, I think we do have some prescriptive right to go in and maintain it. The issue I'm concerned about is, if this was caused by a grease interceptor being correctly installed, that, that's a, that's different than whose obligation is to maintain it. Let's assume it was the city's obligation to maintain, and they still had a grease interceptor that was incorrectly installed. I do think there's some potential fault. So I, I think it's worthy of some investigation, but I want to make sure, I, I'm hearing two different conversations, and they are different conversations. One's property rights and maintenance, one's who caused the problem.
Good point.
Thank you, Cory. I was going to point that out, that, that it is, and I, I agree that we should maintain it, but they caused it. At least, from what the information we've been given, they caused a good deal of it, so.
And so, I guess a question, I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, is that, do you know if that Taco Bell's, are they corporate-owned, or is it, is it like a franchisee? Do you know the answer to that by chance?
I do not know the answer to that.
Um, because I, I, my preference would be to reach out to the owner before we just automatically, you know, send them, you know, to litigation, and see if there's a way to, to solve this through them. I don't know what everyone else feels, but I'd like to see what their thoughts on it would be.
Do we know if it's been corrected here, their grease interceptor? Has it been fixed?
Yes, it has.
And do we, so going forward, do we have plans to look at all, all restaurants? It's not like you said, we have plans to look at all restaurants to see if, you know, how we maintain the lines and different things like that, so we don't get into trouble later?
All, all the residents, whether they're new or renovations, have to go through our building department. We very carefully look at their lines. I, I can only surmise and guess, or guess how this happened, and the past might have been a discreet or small renovation, and they didn't come in to get a building permit. I, I don't know, but it was, it was discovered during an inspection process. We contacted the plumber, and the business, they were, they were quite open, that the piping wasn't installed correctly. We have record of that in our IP program.
But I mean, going forward, we're, we're being, trying to be more proactive with this kind of thing.
Yeah, but they, like I said, the older establishments, if they don't come in for building permit, I mean, a lot of times, the plans that, that we have on record may not be, reflect accurate field conditions.
Maybe we ought to be looking at them, you know, I mean, whether they're doing an upgrade or not.
And you definitely know for sure that they did not pull a permit on that work that they did with the grease interceptor?
I, I, when it was installed incorrectly, I have no idea. Alls I know is they did pull a permit on the work they were doing, so when we did discover that the interceptor was incorrectly installed.
Because is it not protocol for us to always check the installation of a grease interceptor after it's installed?
Always.
Always.
The design before it gets installed, and then inspected after it's installed, or as well.
I guess the question is, when was it installed? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, so it was quite a while ago?
It was a long time ago.
Okay, okay. All right.
Is, are you asking if the, if they came to get permits on the new one that was just installed, too? Is that what you're asking?
The one that's causing, well, yeah, it would be now.
Have they fixed, have they fixed it? Have they installed a new one?
They, they have fixed it, but I just want to point out that, you know, you have a grease interceptor inside a kitchen, you got the plumbing fixtures, and quite com, quite often, even though those lines are separate, they're very close together. So even if some renovation occurred, or some minor renovation were, the plumbers got those switched up, that's, that's a possibility. It could have been done by accident.
Which to me just proves more culpability on their part, too. I mean, if they had somebody install it wrong, they've got some culpability in the problem. So I'm definitely with Kyle to work, to try and work with them.
And so I guess, is staff's recommendation, or John, were you saying that, that we should do this, and then attempt to, to collect, or should we attempt to collect and then do it?
I think we should go ahead and take care of the problem, and then look at whose, whose fault is, where the negligence is, and where the fault lies, and try to work with them that way.
Can't you, can't you do it simultaneously?
Yeah.
Get hold of them and tell them what the issues are?
Well, we can, and we certainly can. In fact, we could probably approach them before the work is actually done, but in terms of how long it might take them, it depends on whether they're a franchise, you know, restaurant, or whether they're company-owned, as far as how long it'll take them to, you know, process whatever it is, where, you know, we would, or to come back to, to us, so, I mean, yeah. I think, I just think that we should go ahead and, and take care of the problem before, because we, I mean, we've got a partially collapsed sewer line. It's not providing adequate service.
Quick question. Is this not the work that we're, is taking place Wednesday? Is this a different project than what is taking place?
I don't believe it's taking place Wednesday.
Yeah, that's a great point. All right.
Cory, do you have any insight on this, on kind of the best way to move forward on it, or?
I, I have not been involved in the discussion about the fault. I was only involved in the property rights. But my understanding is that there, I mean, if there, if our sewer line has collapsed, and it is, I think, our line, my suggestion is we need to get it fixed. So I would get it fixed, and then seek recovery after.
Because we have other liability besides just that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were aware the council may have these questions, but I would certainly, you know, strongly agreeable with the city manager and attorney that this is an urgent situation. We have a very badly degraded pipe, and I think we need to repair that, and then try to find out culpability afterwards.
Any other discussion?
You know, my, my thought is it's a 35-year-old line, too, and, and I mean, I always bring it down to the basic level. If you're driving a 1980 car, and someone borrows it and stuff, and the tranny goes out, do you hold them responsible for the whole tranny? I don't know. Was it wearing out already? I mean, that's my level that I think of things, so. But then again, if they were hot-rotting around and blew the tranny out, then, then it's their fault, too. So, and, and extra grease, you're saying deteriorates it?
Well, that's a good point. I mean, what's, how much of the cost does go to, would you assign to Taco Bell? You've got McDonald's on the line, too.
Absolutely.
Their grease trap is hooked up, and they're going to have the benefit of a brand-new lateral line.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Is any part of this, and I know I'm reaching, but is any part of this fall into a utility grant with NERA?
I don't know. We'd have to talk to, to Debbie maybe and Jeff, I guess, to determine is any kind of relief they could.
Well, my answer's yes. I mean, this is the, as long as this is within the urban renewal area, this is precisely the type of
Correct.
Public improvement, utility upgrade that NARA was, was.
There's boundaries, it can only go up so high, but I mean, but it can't hurt.
Right. So if this is within the boundaries of the urban renewal area, and I suspect it is, but I don't recall specifically, this is precisely the type of improvement that it would be, would be appropriate.
So Wayne, are you suggesting the city go apply for a grant from NARA?
No. But I'm saying Taco Bell could.
Which they can if they're in the urban renewal, but I'm not sure where the urban renewal boundary cuts off. I don't recall that.
Yeah, I'm not either in this location.
There's quite a few options that we can pursue, you know, there's SIRS, there's urban renewal, you know, grants.
I think their grant's only fifteen thousand, so I mean, it's, it's a drop to what you've got going on, it's a ten percent, but.
David, and you said that there's four or five other locations that have this potential headache or hiccup to them throughout the city that you know of?
Potentially in the Dust real area. I, I don't believe there are any more food service establishments, but like I said, I haven't looked too close at the, at all the easements that are, or all the lines that currently aren't and not, not in a city easement, but I will get to that as soon as I can.
And Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I just want to clarify now, the, the grant is certainly available, but if this is a city expense and the city would like to seek assistance from NARA, there's no fifteen thousand dollar, the city could, if there is a city cost associated and, and NARA wants to assist because it's an urban renewal project, they certainly can do so with no monetary limitation.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So can we just move forward with approving the repair and then hopefully this will come back to us to discuss out of study or an executive of resolving the issue, yes?
Yes.
And that's what I would like to see.
Yes, that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close the vote and CR forty-three passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR forty-four.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Northland and WL Contractors Incorporated for the 2015 Traffic Signal Improvements Program.
Move to approve. Jim?
Mayor, this Traffic Signal Improvements Program for 2015 would focus on the five intersections, signalized intersections along 104th and 104th Avenue.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions that I didn't see and maybe I just didn't read it quite closely enough, but when is the project expected to begin? How long is it going to take to complete it? And then how much of a traffic impact are all these going to have?
I didn't refresh my memory on the contract, but it should begin shortly after, WL's our annual maintenance contractor, so they'll be on this fairly shortly. In the contract, I think it's even the first or second phase, there is a performance period that should be in there.
I did see where that they don't need it, it would be five hundred dollars a day. I didn't see, I guess it.
There should be a performance period, number of days.
Okay, yeah, thirty-five calendar days. Okay, so it could be they should be able to start within a month.
There'll be little impacted traffic.
Okay.
You know, if they have to replace the conduit, they'd bore it under the road.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure how that looked, cause I, you know, with 104th being a busy, one of our busy streets, I was worried about huge impacts.
Yeah, they'd use a board machine, you've seen them on tracks beside the road, that's how they do the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Kim? Any other discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open. I'll close that vote and CR forty-four passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is CR forty-five. A resolution making findings of fact in support of the decision to grant a retail marijuana store license to AJ O Holdings LLC doing business as Natural Selections. Corey? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Move to approve. Okay. Thank you. Corey?
Madam Mayor, members of council, at the conclusion of the hearing on March ninth, two thousand and fifteen, council made a motion to direct that these findings be prepared. I would just point out, the city manager pointed out to me late today, he found a typo and he's absolutely right in the, in subsection two C, the second line refers to medical marijuana outlets, it should say retail marijuana outlets. But with that, based on the motion you made at the last meeting, I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and the motion to approve the March ninth, two thousand and fifteen minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is CR forty-five.
A resolution making findings of fact in support of the decision to grant a retail marijuana store license to AJ O Holdings LLC doing business as Natural Selections.
Corey? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Move to approve. Okay. Thank you. Corey?
Madam Mayor, members of council, at the conclusion of the hearing on March ninth, two thousand and fifteen, council made a motion to direct that these findings be prepared. I would just point out, the city manager pointed out to me late today, he found a typo and he's absolutely right in the, in subsection two C, the second line refers to medical marijuana outlets, it should say retail marijuana outlets. But with that, based on the motion you made at the last meeting, I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR forty-five passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now adjourn the marijuana licensing board and reconvene regular council meeting. Next on the agenda for the council is communications and we'll start with Jane.
Nothing.
I just wanted to thank all of staff and the volunteers who came out to the Highline cleanup just two weekends ago. Fortunately, we had nice weather, it wasn't too hot, it wasn't too cold, it wasn't too rainy, so thank you to everyone who came out to support us. And then Kyle and I are also working on a ward meeting, hopefully to have here at the end of April, so stay tuned for that.
I wanted to mention that Adams Twelve Five Star Schools Athletic Department has invited all of us to be honored VIP guests at their upcoming Special Olympics project called Unify. And they have a whole host of different games and things that their varsity team, basketball team, along with kids that have some disabilities and so forth will be playing. And there's a whole set of them, but they were specifically wanting to invite all of us, and I can send this to all of you that are, well, I can send it to everybody whether you're interested or not, you can always decide. I think I received it. Did everybody else receive this? I don't know, but, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, it, it's just about, it's at three fifteen on the fourth, I'm sorry, April seventh, excuse me, four, seven, at Horizon High School. And they're going to be playing at three thirty and they would like to recognize VIP guests that are there honoring their Unified Games. So I'll just send this out to everybody.
That's good.
Cause I wasn't sure who got it, I thought it was maybe just me, so. But I'll send it out to everybody who would like to attend and they ask that you come early if you're going to attend and give them the note so that they can recognize.
And I did check with Francis and if you wanted to bring family or friends, you can do that also.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
I attended the Relay for Life, the Webster Lake Relay for Life kickoff meeting that was held at the Northland STEM School. That was a week and a half ago and they will have a monthly meeting there. It's kind of a motivational meeting for teams, so if you're thinking about getting a team, you can show up, go to the Webster Lake Relay for Life website, I can't remember what it is, I think it's exactly that Webster Lake Relay for Life. And you can start a team, join up, come to the motivational meetings, that'll be in September before you know it probably, so they're already gearing, gearing up for that. I attended the CPAN volunteer dinner appreciation, that was really great that the PD did that for the CPAN volunteers, there were a lot of people there and it's nice to, to recognize all of them. And I did want to remind people that there will be a nine news health fair held at the crossroads back this church off of 104th and Huron on April twentieth, and it'll be from seven till twelve. And that's always a great, I go every year to that, so it's a really good event to go to and get your health checked out. That's it.
Okay. And the only thing that I have right now is I was asked to bring forward, they're going to have a senior conference again this year, April twenty-third, over at Adams County Fairgrounds. And this year's theme is health and safety for seniors, taking care of ourselves and our community. And so everyone, council is invited to attend that if they would like to.
I was at the canal cleanup too, it was a huge crowd this year and I think I saw in an email that it was like five hundred bags of trash and bulk items they picked up, so that was tremendous. And my other comment I was going to have is on 104 days till the Rotary Ducky Derby, so.
104 days.
Buy your ducks and buy them often.
I just have two things. I had the opportunity to go out to NLC in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago and I got some really good things out of it and I think that, you know, Northland is positioning itself really well to, to build some partnerships with our fellow cities and so that was really exciting to be a part of. And then I also had the opportunity to go to the Ralston House Dinner out in, I guess that'd be Lakewood. And I was extremely proud that Northland's involved with that organization and some of the stories that I heard while I was there actually brought me to tears. And so seeing, you know, Northland's name right there with the newest, you know, house and, and having everyone come up to a, come up to me and talking to us about our staff and about John and about David, doing some great things with, with that organization, you know, made me really proud. So I just want to give kudos to, to you guys for that, that was, was a proud moment, so.
Thank you. Kim?
We'll be having a ward forum meeting on April fourteenth and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board met last week. We went over sponsorship packets and now they'll be coming to council, they make a, they made a recommendation on those, so that should be coming forth to council on some of their sponsorship ideas. Then also issued three more, or I guess just three permits for vendors for EB Raines Park this summer, there weren't that many this year, only I think a total of three. So not as much interest over there and it's a good group of people. We need more people for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we're down to three people, so we have two vacancies on there now. So just encourage people, if they're interested, to take a look at some of our boards and commissions, we do need volunteers.
Thank you. Joanna?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
John?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Corey?
Nothing for me either.
We failed to mention, we should have, or I should say, I failed to mention that we wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Northland Community Foundation dining donate, so there were a lot of generous people who did donations who also came out, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Next on the agenda is publicly invited to be heard. And seeing them approach?
We adjourn, thank you very much.